For the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. We'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And then can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, move on to our regular business this morning. We have a second reading in public hearing.
Now's the time for the second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Track 1, Timmermans Addition, Southeast Quarter, Section 17, Delapre Township, from A1 Agriculture District to PD Planning Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends denial five to one.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing County Planning. The applicant for this item this morning is Corey Kyle and Casey Han. Again, this is an item as an application to rezone the subject property from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District. Subject property is approximately two and a half miles northwest of the city of T. Comprehensive plan identifies this specific parcel as future agricultural area. This is just outside of the growth area for the city of T. Subject parcel is 4.72 acres in size. Subject parcel is improved with an approximate 55 by 100-foot square foot bill or 55-foot by 100-square-foot building that is currently permitted by Lincoln County in the state of South Dakota for medical cannabis cultivation. The pictures on the screen, the ones showing to the north, that would be looking from the road directly to the building that is currently constructed and operational on the property. The property directly to the west would be Mr. Han's property, which is a single-family dwelling. The proposal or the application's been submitted to you for the Plan Development District. Staff has drafted an ordinance that ordinance would allow three particular uses on the property, the first being medical cannabis cultivation, which again is currently permitted by Lincoln County in the state of South Dakota and is currently in operation. The second item that would be allowed on the property would be medical cannabis processing or manufacturing. And then the third item would be agricultural, which is also currently identified or used on the property. As noted in the staff analysis, currently in Lincoln County, if we want to utilize vertical integration or have cult or to have manufacturing of medical cannabis, that's only allowed in the I-1 light industrial district. And so to rezone this property for that particular type of use would more than likely not be consistent with the regulations and with the comprehensive plan. However, staff worked with the applicant to limit the uses that would be allowed on the property and specifically would allow medical cannabis manufacturing on the property. As is proposed currently, there is no proposed new buildings on the property. They're only proposing to utilize the existing building on the property. Any changes to the property as far as additional buildings, as far as modification of the existing building would have to go back to a public hearing. So the last question we asked is the Planning Commission recommendation was for denial. They didn't do an affirmative motion. They did a straight denial on it. There was a number of neighbors that were in attendance at the public hearing, raised concerns about industrial-type uses on the property, also raised concerns about the intent of a Plan Development District, specifically one single parcel on the property. As a couple of points that I think staff would make on that is is that when we participated, and as did Commissioner Landy and Commissioner Schmidt on the IM-26 Task Force, I we were led to believe that manufacturing was a chemical-induced process or have volatile chemicals. What the applicants are proposing for medical manufacturing or cannabis manufacturing is not volatile, it doesn't involve chemicals. I'll let them further explain exactly what it is. But as far as as falling in with the intent of a Plan Development District, staff's response would be is is that this is taking into account all of the neighboring properties because we are limiting the amount of uses that would be allowed on the property specifically to lessen what would be allowed in an I-1 light industrial district. So with that, we'd have to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Any Commissioner members have questions?
Toby? I saw that the Planning Commission voted five to one to turn this down. What was their rationale for doing so?
Again, the the public, there was a number of neighbors in attendance that raised concerns about the the industrial-type use that would be permitted on the property. And again, as well as they raised concerns about the intent of a Plan Development District to be just a single parcel as opposed to a more conceptual plan. And again, the point that I would make is is that a Plan Development fits this fits this application appropriately because it limits the amount of uses that can be allowed on the property. Specifically, again, if the applicants wanted to pursue what they want to pursue, they would have to rezone the subject parcel to I-1 light industrial, which would open it up to significantly more uses. So.
Toby, you keep mentioning the term "industrial use," and then you said that the IM-26 Committee was talking about hazardous chemicals and things like that. And then now you're saying these folks here have disabused you of that notion? I mean, what do you mean by that?
I'll let them go into detail what the process would be, but my interpretation, the use by the zoning ordinance is an industrial use, but what they're proposing is not, in my opinion, what an industrial-type use is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, if not, would the applicant come up and give testimony? Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Casey Han. Address 46560, 270th Street. I am the owner of the 17-acre parcel directly to the west. My family lives on the parcel. I'm also co-owner of the Pure Bliss Farms building, which is on the four-acre parcel. My wife and I, we do not, we are completely in line with you guys, saying that we don't want industrial out there at that property. We're simply just seeking to rezone the four acres to Plan Development so that we could obtain our medical marijuana manufacturing license. With that, we would make medical cannabis edibles and concentrates. The manufacturing, like Toby mentioned, would be done within our current building that's already built with staff that we've already got, with equipment that we already have on site. We're ready to plug the stuff in. We're ready to drop our application for the license. This is our last hurdle to make that happen. Toby mentioned this this manufacturing process is a process known as live rosin. Doesn't use any solvents. It simply combines cannabis with ice and water, heat and pressure. The other extraction methods are CO2, butane, or ethanol extractions. That will not be done on the property. This also limits unnecessary transportation of cannabis product from one location to another when we can simply make this happen, vertical integration within the building we have. Main reason we're doing this is for the medical patients in South Dakota that can benefit from these these items, such as Parkinson's, cancers, seizures, things like that. At the request of many dispensaries, they're getting a lot of customers, medical patients, that are asking if they will be carrying these products simply because they don't want to inhale or smoke the cannabis products. They don't want to take up smoking cannabis when they can simply take an edible and and help their their problem. Addressing some of the issues from the past hearing about the road usage and how we are putting a damper on the road, my wife and I and a couple of other neighbors have took it upon ourselves to reach out to the county and ask for sodium chloride to be put down on the road, not only to limit the dust, but to also limit the water from absorbing into the gravel road and turning it into mush. It has helped a lot. The water actually now sheds off of the road and gets quite a bit less less muddy. As far as traffic use, we have six, seven cars, employees daily, that come down the quarter of a mile from the highway to the property, and then they go right back out, which is significantly less than other things that are going on further down the gravel road, such as a petting zoo that's about a mile or so down the road that's open to the public, that has seen tons of traffic that go beyond our property and beyond our house. Again, we're doing this for the for the patients that voted for medical marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Commissioner members have questions for the applicant?
Yes. Thanks for being here today.
Absolutely.
I think this is kind of an issue of first impression that's come in front of us. And I think what I'd like to hear from you is, let me back up a minute, just preface my question. There was a lot of discussion in front of this commission when we first voted to approve our ordinance, where we heard some testimony from Emmett Reisstrafer. He came in, lobbied for it, and he discussed the issue of what the manufacturing process looks like. And he talked about safety standards and things like that. And kind of created an idea, I think, in the mind of myself, probably in the minds of the other commissioners, about industrial uses, safety, and things like that. And then, of course, that along came the IM-26 Committee. They were kind of, you know, super stringent about this and, you know, kind of gave what the worst-case scenario was for everything. And now what you guys are saying is, you're not going to have like some kind of quote-unquote "industrial" manufacturing out there. But I think here's the issue. Can you educate me, as well as the other commission members, as well as the public, on what exactly it is you're doing out there and how you're doing it? Because just now, you're like, well, we're not using solvents, and it's heat and pressure, and it's not industrial. I don't know what any of that means.
Sure. And I can let some of my my colleagues kind of more explain that. I'm just the builder and I I'm the owner. These guys are the scientists behind that that process. But what Emmett Reisstrafer is talking about, that kind of manufacturing, that's that's taking the trim, the shake, the leaves, and from for that process, they have to use the butanes and solvents to do that manufacturing, to where this is not. This is actually putting the actual cannabis plant and all into a bucket and mixing it with ice and water, stirring it until there is a sandy material at the bottom. They screen it, net it, put it through a freeze dryer, and then they put it through a heat a heat press. From there, it can be injected into live rosin cartridges or gummies, chocolate bars, things of that nature with zero solvents, dangerous chemicals. And as an as a homeowner that lives directly to the west of that, I would be more uncomfortable with that kind of manufacturing process than I am with this one. This one here, I am 100% comfortable with, being living right next to it. And like I said before, I don't want to be living next, I mean, I built that 17-acre property for my home, for my family. I don't want to be living next to an industrial park with with all that all that kind of stuff. This is not that.
So this big bucket that you put it in, is it a five-gallon bucket or a 100-gallon bucket, or what is it?
Like a 55-gallon drum.
Okay.
Yep, out of time. And you basically stir it with a glorified boat paddle.
And it's non-flammable?
Non-flammable. It's just cannabis, ice and water, stir it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other Commissioners have questions for the applicant? All right, if not, I will ask any of the proponents, people in favor of the application to come up. And please limit your comments. If there is a representative that wants to come up and say anything more, that'd be great.
Hi, my name is Greg Best. I live at 5200 South Ratliff Avenue, Unit 4, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57108. I am speaking in favor of this rezoning. I am an employee at Pure Bliss Farms, and since the start of the medical marijuana program, we were told we would be able to vertically integrate and be able to do everything in-house. I know when you hear words like "processing" or "manufacturing," it might make you think of a big industrial plant or something of that scale. That is not our goal with this rezone at all. We are trying to obtain a license to create a few pivot products the patients have been requesting throughout the state. All are made free of solvents, and no heavy-duty equipment is needed. Our goal is to produce small-scale boutique craft cannabis cannabis products such as tinctures, topicals, and edibles. The room we would use is an already-existing room, and no additional construction is needed. It's around 15 by 20, and only about half the room would be used. The space would only be occupied five to eight days out of the month. Having this license on site would help reduce the risk of transporting product and all the hassle that goes along with that. Last week, the Department of Health came through for an inspection, and I feel we helped set the standard and that the state needs for regulation and compliance. The state has a 24-hour access to our, excuse me, cameras and facility. We were deemed fully secure and compliant with the state. Several local business owners, as well as members of the T Chamber of Commerce, have toured our facility and were extremely impressed at how clean and regulated everything was. We are doing our best to combat the negative stigma that's often associated with this industry. Finding an alternative location this small in the light industrial area would be extremely tough and would probably push us to look outside the county. I think this could be a great opportunity to generate some local tax revenue and potentially employ one or two local residents as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to testify? All right, if not, opponents? Anyone opposed to this application?
Good morning. Dennis Kouts, 46533, 270th Street, T, South Dakota. I spoke previously in front of the Planning Commission. My concerns were related directly to the language around the Plan Development District. As Toby previously stated, I commented around what it states to be is not the intent of the Plan Development District, which is to accommodate or encourage the development of isolated small tracts where adjoining parcels are not considered within an overall development scheme. The adjoining properties are obviously still A1 agriculture, which is what the use of the property currently is by the proponents. I just believe that by approving this, you're setting a precedent that really says that anybody that can get zoned as a planning development parcel of land has the ability to now get permissions to be able to manufacture on that site. I also commented regarding the the language around the light industrial requirements and the special permitting required. I understand the manufacturing process, as has been described, may not be as complex as maybe some imagine, but it's still a manufacturing process. I also believe that what we're talking about today is a small entry into the business for the proponents, but my concern is, what does two to five years look like as that business continues to scale and grow? Thanks for your time.
Dennis, I got a question.
Yep.
Isn't most of the land up there being gobbled up by the city of Sioux Falls, as well as the surrounding communities? And it's kind of the trajectory of all that land use is no longer going to be agricultural, right?
Oh, that's true. But again, you said gobbled up. I've been in my property for going on 18 years now. Since that time, there's been one to two additional homes that have been built out there. Of course, having to get housing eligibility on the property is not simple if it doesn't exist already, so there's a lot of work that goes into that. It's not a high-growth area at this time, as far as additional housing development goes.
I am curious about your comment about the Plan Development District. Can you flush that out a little bit as well? What what your concern is there?
Well, there's no other plans, right? I mean, if you read what the intent is in 154 dot 195, it very specifically states that "the intent of the Plan Development District is to encourage well-planned, efficient development, encourage the redevelopment of contiguous large-plot parcels into an integrated and orderly subdivision pattern, with particular attention to developing an efficient and coordinated network of internal streets." None of that is part of this, right? We're taking a parcel of land, and we're saying we're going to grant them the ability to rezone for their intended manufacturing purposes. It's almost like to me, this is my opinion, I'm not a rezon or a zoning expert by any means, this is like a exception bucket as it comes to rezoning. And I think that's what the intent there is, to try to find a way, as everybody has stated, it'd be very difficult to rezone this into light industrial, so they found a exception opportunity through the rezoning process. The part that sticks with me every time as I read this is what the intent is not supposed to do, and that's take a four-point-some acre parcel of land and rezone it for this specific individual purpose without consideration as to what will be done with the land around it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponent testimony? All right. Would the proponent applicant like to make any additional rebuttal testimony? Is there anybody here who would like to make rebuttal testimony?
My name's Corey Kyle. I live at 5100 East 61st Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm co-owner of Pure Bliss Farms on this property here. My rebuttals to this gentleman's points would be, one, we are going about this rezoning on the recommendations of your guys' staff. Toby was the one that kind of is leading us in this recommended recommended way. And then I just feel it would be the smartest way because it limits us from doing any kind of unexpected growth or unexplained growth to you guys because everything has to come back to you in the long run. So you would have to approve everything anyway, so you guys have final word regardless of any kind of additional growth that we try to do.
All right. One last time, any Commissioners have any questions for anybody who's testified today?
I have a question first.
Go ahead.
Toby? Spot or not spot zoning?
Well, I think the the Plan Development gives you conventional ways to look at it.
It's a yes or no question. Spot or no?
If from a from a zoning standpoint, spot, yes.
Thank you.
Toby, Plan Development Districts by their very nature can be considered spot zoning, right?
Correct.
We did this with the Good Earth State, or I was going to say Good Earth State. We did this with the Good Earth Farm, right? And there's this notion out there of Plan Development Districts are supposed to have these interconnected streets and all that. Really, the way that we've implemented that policy is essentially we've taken people's acreages where they want to do this activity where they ordinarily would not be able to do it, they apply for a Plan Development District, and then they're able to do it, right? If we if we give them approval.
I I would say the intent of it is we negotiate with them.
Right.
They, you know, on a typical rezone, which is what they originally proposed our office with, we said, well, but if we do that, you can do all of this. And in the past, how many times have we done conventional rezones where the reality wasn't the plan or what the proposal was? The Plan Development gives us the flexibility, I would say, to create standards and regulations that don't exist in a conventional rezoning. And to answer, to further answer the question, every Plan Development that Lincoln County's done has been a spot zone. They haven't been connected to an additional zoning district, so.
Thank you.
And Toby, did you come up with a set of conditions to put on this rezone?
So the standards that we put together are the standards that exist in that particular uses, yes. So the ordinance before you would allow the cultivation, the manufacturing, and agricultural, those uses are what is prescribed under the current standards of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yep.
More questions?
One more question, then I'm going to close testimony.
It's going to be long, then. It's going to be a run-on. So in, just to clarify, you believe that under a conditional zoning, rezone, this would not qualify, and I get that idea. So then we've talked about Plan Developments. Enlighten me a little bit about these conditions that we placed on other Plan Developments. How many times do we review those, inspect those, verify that they're following those? How many times have we done it, and how do we do that? And what would be the penalty if they fail to follow that?
So what we typically do is you lock them in with what they're at, and so we do inspect them on an annual basis to make sure that the standards, conditions are being met. In addition to that, any changes of that property requires it to go back to a public hearing, which doesn't happen in a conventional rezone. So again, as was mentioned, we lock them in on what this site is right now. Any additional buildings, any additional add-ons to that building would require an additional public hearing process, which doesn't happen in a conventional rezone.
All right, going once, going twice. Commissioner questions? All right, I'm going to close testimony and open open the public hearing up for commission discussion. If any. If not, I consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that with this caveat. We have home industry where a person wants to just develop, you know, on their own, and if Mr. Casey had this, which is smaller enterprise, it would really, he wouldn't have to do anything. So I think that this is a revolutionary new way to do something, and I commend him for it, so. Call the question.
Thank you for that. Any further comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. I applaud the Planning and Zoning Department for working with them to come up with a viable solution for what they're wanting to do. A condition that cannot be overlooked, it's still spot zoning. And our intent is to make sure that we have an area planned. This is hardly planning for the area, it's a spot. It only causes complications down the road later that if we're not here, somebody else down the road's going to have to deal with. So for that reason, I won't be supporting it. But I do commend that if this has to, if it does get approved, at least we have some control over the conditions that get placed on it. But it's just too hard to overlook that it's, every facet of this is still a spot zoning, and we have frowned on that over and over again in the past. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think the location here is optimal. If I could wave my magic wand and fix it, it wouldn't be here. The reason it's here is because you own the property, and if you had to go out and buy property in I-1 light industrial, you'd pay through the nose, and you may not even be able to get it. I think what this case does is puts a spotlight on the importance of our upcoming comprehensive plan that we're revamping. We have got to, we're going to have to spend a lot of time on the revamp of the comprehensive plan so we don't end up with this. I mean, no, no offense to all of you, but I understand why you're doing it. You own the property, you're in this, you're operating in the space. I commend you for all of that. It's Lincoln County's rules that are the issue here. And I sympathize with Mr. Kouts. I understand his concerns. But kind of the tiebreaker here for me is the way that we've applied our Plan Development District law or ordinance is that we allow this, and all these Plan Development Districts are spot zoning. We did this for Good Earth Farm. It's an acreage out there. We didn't want to create an ordinance for, trying to remember what that was, something to do with agrotourism, is what it's called. We didn't want to create that, so instead, we took the route of advising her to do a Plan Development District. And we do that with a lot of people who, where we don't want to tinker with our ordinances, the escape valve mechanism to be able to do what they want to do, but for us to be able to manage it and control it and regulate it is to do a Plan Development District. It just puts a spotlight on the fact that we need to revamp our rules. I will say this with property north of 106. Property north of 106 is fair game for commercial development, even though it may still be agricultural in nature. Land north of 106 is no longer about just remaining ag land. It's being gobbled up from the north by Sioux Falls, and it's being gobbled up from the south by, in this instance, T. You look at a map and you look at the colors on the map, it's all being taken up. It's no longer going to be ag land in the future. Once we do the revamp of our comprehensive Once we do the revamp of our comprehensive plan, you'll probably see that delineated in there, that, you know, that line that says we want to keep ag land ag land? Well, I think there'd be exceptions for that depending upon where in the county you're at. I think probably because you're a new industry as well and you're cannabis, you're probably getting a little bit of scrutiny that ordinarily you wouldn't get. If this was somebody out there making chocolates and there was no cannabis inside the chocolate, I don't think anybody would probably look twice. But the thing is, that's what happens when you're in a controversial industry like cannabis. But it is the law of the land now. And that's kind of a tiebreaker for me as well. But I do think the concerns of your neighbors are valid and you're gonna have to be a good neighbor to them. You're gonna, you know, I hear the comment about putting sodium chloride down on the road. Well, you know who pays for that? You and I and all the rest of the taxpayers pay for that, too. So that does cost the county some money. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion amongst the board? Go ahead.
Agreed that the Good Earth Farm was a spot zone, but it was an establishment that had been preexisting. This is something that has popped out that previous to the law change had not been there. And they had the opportunity to acquire property that would fit the existing guidelines. I think it is not a, coming to the general taxpayers to allow business to operate out in the rural areas just because it's cheap. We have conditions that they could have found property that would meet the criteria that existed. So again, this is a unique situation, yes, by plan development. But the plan development in the past has not typically been to start a new business. It has been something that was existing and we're trying to get them into compliance. So at this time, I still cannot support this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, call the question.
Any further comment or discussion amongst the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll yield.
Commissioner Gibbon, are you on with us?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to say?
I totally agree with Commissioner Aaron's that we did make an exception with Good Earth Farms and probably this would follow this criteria.
All right. Thank you for that. If no further discussion, Sherry, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries.
Congratulations, guys.
All right. Next agenda item, ambulance district. I'm gonna preface this right now with just saying, I was looking at statutes this morning, wanna make sure that all of our notifications have been correct, both on Turner County's side and our side. So I'm gonna ask the board this morning just for a motion to table that item until we have a chance to vet that further.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make the motion. I'll probably make some comment, too.
Okay. Any, is there a second for my motion, or the motion I'm asking for?
I'll second.
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Aaron's, a second by Commissioner Gibbon. Any discussion on the motion to table?
Madam Chair, can we ask the representative from Lennox if they have notified those individuals to satisfy everybody or whatever?
Well, there's some statutes that we're looking at. And I was talking with legal counsel this morning and we agree that we need to make sure that this was noticed the way it needs to be noticed per statute, so. Do you disagree, counsel? He's shaking his head. No? Oh, okay. All right.
So this is your recommendation, Bill?
I've been talking to the state attorney over in Turner County and...
Do you want to come up to the microphone, please?
Since this ambulance district is between two counties, there has to be a hearing between the two counties. There is a statute under the section that talks about hearings and notices. And whether or not it applies to each of the commission meetings as a hearing for the resolution to pass it, or whether or not it's just for the hearing for the second one, that has to be a joint one, is unclear. And so I would recommend that you notice this hearing for the resolution two times like you would in any other resolution or what the statute is so that if you pass it and the resolution goes to the point where you have a joint meeting down the road, that that can be noticed as well for two, by two weeks and then we can hold that meeting. But if you choose to not read the statute, that you have to notice this one in Turner County and this one here, and then you're challenged and you're wrong, then we'd have to come back again. You may not have a valid election. So my recommendation would be notice the resolution here for two weeks, come back, and then take your vote.
So we're treating this like any other resolution that would go through. Our responsibilities, though, are just to give them permission to have an election, right?
No, there's an entire title in our code books laws on ambulance districts. So we've reviewed those and think that we need to table this so that we do it the right way.
I have no doubt, Madam Chair, that you have reviewed this.
So the recommendation is, is if you're gonna be, if you're gonna take the safe route, we would notice this, the hearing for the resolution for the vote. And that way, if somebody comes in and challenges it later on, more notice is better than not enough.
Yeah, I mean, there's this, I'm looking at it here. It says notice of hearing 34-11A-6. And then it says 34-11A-7. Basically, it's a formalized hearing like we just held a couple minutes ago. So you can't just notice this thing up on the agenda and vote on it. But the reason I'm voting to table is entirely different. My motivation is because I'm still opposed to this because I think it unfairly shifts taxation burden from the city to the ag districts or to farmers and ag land. And I was hoping that the legislature would have dealt with this. Now, we still have another week, I think, for committee bills, I think. If I'm wrong, somebody please disabuse me of that notion. We still have a week left where committee chairman or committees can submit bills to the legislature. And I'm hoping somebody in taxation committees up there in Pierce is listening to this and will agree to resubmit the bill that was in the hopper regarding ambulance district taxation methods because everybody gets, every parcel of land gets taxed equally in an ambulance district. And Linda Young came around to me, as well as probably to the other commissioners, and did somewhat of, backed some, some pretty good analysis. It's not complete. I asked the assessor's office to do some sampling on this and they told me they wouldn't have enough time to do an analysis, which is a whole nother issue in terms of transparency in government. What we ought to do is anytime we affect people's taxes, we ought to run the analysis through the assessor's office to produce a report. But that's a whole other procedural issue. But basically, what this report from Lynn says is that it's going to shift the taxation burden not equally from the city of Lennox to the outlined agricultural areas, but it's gonna be unequal. And it's gonna go to basically a 75-25 split. And so from a substantive point of view, unless the legislature fixes this, I'm not gonna support this because I don't think we should tax farmland more because there's less calls for service out there. There's more in the city, but the people in the city are now gonna shift their taxation burden to the ag farmers. And if people in the city want to reduce their taxation burden, the city of Lennox should just drop, should cut their taxes.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna cut off right there. If there's other commissioners that want to say something, please keep it limited. We're going to, this is a motion to table. This is not the public hearing.
Madam Chair, is there's...
At which testimony will be very welcome.
I would like, do not believe there should be testimony on a motion to table, so I will not share my thoughts.
We have listened extensively to one commissioner, I would, personal privilege on this. I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Aaron's, but to me, this is a pretty simple, straightforward situation where we allow the individuals and taxpayers that are affected by this thing to vote. It's not our responsibility to vet everything on that. It's the responsibility of the proponents or the opponents that don't want this, and it goes to a vote. It's not ours. We don't have that. We're letting those individuals do their constitutional responsibility of saying, yes, I do want an ambulance district and I'll be taxed, or no, I don't. Pretty damn simple, I thought, but...
Thank you. Got a motion to table. Will you call the roll, Sherry?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Thank you. Move on to the next item on our agenda. For a discussion and action to authorize recruitment of treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning. I am asking all of you to approve the attached job bulletin for the treasurer and authorize me to publish that position to, for two weeks with a subsequent review of the applicants by myself and a named liaison from you all to help streamline the process and then be able to do final interviews on the 28th of February.
Anybody have any questions? All right, if there are no questions...
I do have one, Chair. Does anybody open up? My file does not open up on the job description.
Mine just gives me a blank page.
For the record, would you mind either presenting a copy of it or reading it?
Certainly. I have it on this.
Just so we have it in the file?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we, you guys go ahead and do that and then we'll just move on to the next agenda item and bring it back when we have it in front of us. All right, snow removal. Terry?
Good morning. First item I have for you this morning is I wanna kind of discuss some issues we're having with residents piling snow up in the right-of-way. Granted, we've had a lot of snow this year and it needs to go somewhere, but, so I just wanted, I was out last week and we're pondering whether to send out letters to these folks or at least, I mean, not just picking on people, but we would send them out to anybody that applies. But I just wanted to show you guys some of the issues that we're dealing with out there. So this one here, again, all of these are north of, north of town. So they're piling this up in a driveway. I mean, it's gotta be seven foot tall and it's, what, six feet off the edge of the road? I mean, this is, this is a hazard. This is a safety issue, in my opinion, to the traveling public. I mean, not, not just them, but this one here, you know, we come along and we take our motor graders and we wing back in the ditches with 12-foot wings and we come back, I mean, we see that, we see this, you know? So we end up veering out for it so we don't, you know, damage equipment and this and that. Next one I have, here's an instance where they've been pushing across the road. You can see the driveway is on the left side there and there's a pile of snow on the right side of the road there and they've been pushing across. You see the rest of the snow in the, in that ditch? Nothing is piling up except where his pile is. And what this does over time and continued to get snow, it creates a drift there in itself. You know, again, causing an issue where there may not be an issue in the first place type thing. Another one I have here, they went out and they pushed this all the way back to pass to the right-of-way there. I mean, they got a pretty good pile out there. And on this one here, this is on the north side of a highway. So anytime you're gonna get a north wind, and, I mean, it's just gonna blow right back in. It's gonna drift off of that, that pile. Next one I got is, I think this is the one, yeah. So this is, this is the one that's gonna be showing where there's a hazard to the traveling public. Now, this here is fairly mild. You'll see the snow, snow tracks through the road there. This guy recently pushed this out before I took this picture. Maybe that day, maybe earlier that day. We had already been around up that way, winging back. And you see where he piled it? Just off the white line. You know, so when we come by and we try to wing that back, you know, it might be a few days later, that pile might be hard as a rock. You know, then, then we gotta go up and again. North side of the road is where his pile is and it's gonna drift. I mean, you see there's nothing else coming out on the road there, but that pile's gonna create a drift. So again, I understand that there's a lot of, lot of snow this year, probably more than we've had probably in the last three years combined, close to, maybe, I don't know. But I would just, hopefully people watching will see this. And again, I, we're contemplating sending letters out to folks on this, that this, like I said, it, to me, is a hazard for the traveling public and it's a safety issue, so. Any questions?
Terry, what can they do? I mean, I understand what you're saying and agree with that. But I was looking at some of those that are well into the ditch area and I'm wondering how, what they can do to mitigate that. If they don't have a loader, do they, I, I don't know how they would reduce that pile of snow without putting their front end well into the ditch. So I'm, I'm just, it's kind of, it's kind of a catch-22 here.
So, look, I, I mean, I understand and, and you drive by these places and their yards are getting filled up with piles of snow, you know? They got nowhere else to go with it. I, I get it. But at some point, we, I mean, our concern is for the people that travel on, on the roads and their safety.
Well, especially if it's on the north side and the wind with some snow, it'll be, it'll be drifted shut.
I mean, if, if, like I said, it's gonna create issues where there wouldn't be an issue otherwise, you know? What, 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 what should they do? I, I, I don't know. You know, so another thing, we've had a few of these where they pushed it out and piled it right next to their driveway on both sides. Well, we come by and we wing back and maybe it's not a big pile. Well, when we're winging back, then it throws it in the driveway and then I get a phone call, you filled in my driveway.
Is there, it's, I feel like there's a statute that prohibits this, that makes it a misdemeanor.
Well, I don't know about a misdemeanor, Madam Chair, but there's SDCL 21-10-1, Acts and Omissions Constituting nuisances. And when you do anything that interferes, obstructs, or tends to obstruct, or renders dangerous for passage of street or highway, you have violated the nuisance statute in South Dakota. And I know the legislature is monkeying around with that for, to protect ag owners. And, but I think the bottom line here is the, you know, in the city of Sioux Falls, it's a misdemeanor, too. But here, this is probably the way these people have always handled it. And now when we get unprecedented snow, it causes problems and they just need to start being good neighbors to the people who use the, to the motorists who use the highway and to the plow operators who plow the highway.
Commissioners, could you recite that again, that statute?
Yeah, it's 21-10-1.
Okay. Thank you. So like I said, I, I, we're contemplating getting letters out. I guess if, if it quits snowing now, maybe it won't be a big deal. But, I mean, some of these people are chronic complaint, are chronic offenders. They do it every year, you know? But like I said, in years past, we just haven't had the amount of snow. And they start pushing it into the right-of-way or into the ditches. I mean, they're already full from, from the snow anyway. I mean, so it's...
What kind of a, I guess what kind of a letter do envision? Is it just a shame on you, don't do it again, or?
Yeah.
Are you gonna threaten some kind of action?
Yeah, no. Counsel told me we can't threaten anybody, so no, we won't threaten anybody with it.
Thank you for that, counsel.
No, it wouldn't be a threatening letter. It's just, hey, and again, maybe a lot of these people aren't aware of it. I mean, maybe, maybe they're aware that they shouldn't be doing this, you know? And, and maybe it's gonna be more of a courtesy.
Well, it's just like when law enforcement, you know, they don't give a ticket out to everybody. They engage in education and that helps. And I think these folks probably just need to be educated a little more on it.
Terry, don't feel bad, I had bales of milk in a north, on a road, county road, I got a letter telling me I should move my bales.
You don't need any action on our part.
No, like I said, it's just-
Inform them.
Yeah, it's more of a, I just wanted to let you know what's happening, because if we do start sending out letters, people are, people may contact you and say, what's this all about? You know, so-
Can we have a copy of the letter before we start getting those calls?
What we send out, it'll be vetted through, through a bill.
Okay.
Or, or Joe, so.
Great. All right, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. We'll circle back to our HR treasurer recruitment.
To confirm, did you guys want me to give you?
I just want, so we have something for the record.
Yeah, do you have a copy of the description?
Actually, now it pulls up, so someone must have fixed it.
Oh, did they put it in there now?
Yeah, thank you.
It wasn't in there before.
We all love technology.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, move on to item five on our agenda, Terry?
All right, next item I have is board action to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution, selecting a consultant for twenty-three, 2023 bridge inspections.
Madam Chair, I offer a motion to approve and authorize?
Second.
Thank you. Motion on a second, Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right, next item I have is supply bids. We had bid openings yesterday for our annual supply bids, and we'll just run through the list, so I'll have to do each item separately, so we have a resolution on it, I believe that's how we've done it before, so. First item we have is concrete products. It's gonna be concrete culverts, box culverts, bridge decking. So, we had three bidders on this. We had Chemcast from Hartford, we had Old Castle Infrastructure Sioux Falls, which used to be Hand Cook, and then we had Rinker Materials, which is formerly Forterra. Typically, so I, I've looked through the packets that they sent me for each of these, and typically what we've done in the past is we award to all three, we award the packets to all three, because I can pick through a different item on each, each bid, and somebody else might have a lower bid on those items, so. So rather than handpicking sizes I think I might need, that way I have the whole book, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Move for approval on recommendation of the highway department to accept bids from all three.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item we have is a bid for crushed concrete, we had two bids. Knife River was eleven dollars a ton, and LG Everest was eleven dollars and ten cents a ton. So, my, my recommendations to award to Knife River for eleven dollars a ton.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Uh, next item, we have cutting edges and snowplow blades. We have two types of cutting edge blades, so one is just a carbide steel blade. We had three bidders for that item. DMC wear parts was a low bid at two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents per cutting edge. Butler machine was two, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. And equipment blades was two hundred and eighty dollars, so my recommendation is to award to DMC for those.
So moved.
Second.
Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item is, it's also a cutting edge, this here is a rubber flex blade that we use. There were two bidders on this item, DMC wear parts at four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-nine cents per four footer, and the other one was equipment blades at four hundred and ninety-four dollars. So my recommendation is to award to DMC.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Got a motion by Erns, second by Schmidt. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item, we have diesel and ethanol. So number two diesel fuel, we had three bidders. Kohl's Petroleum was at two eighty-seven a gallon. CHS Farmers Alliance was two ninety-eight a gallon, and Volan Oil was two ninety-four a gallon. Recommendation is to award diesel to Kohl's Petroleum.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item we have is ten percent ethanol gas, three bidders as well. Kohl's Petroleum at two sixty-one a gallon, CHS at two seventy-eight a gallon, and Volan Oil at two eighty-four a gallon. So my recommendation is Kohl's Petroleum.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item we have is mag chloride applied. We had one bidder, and that's Dust Busters Incorporated at a dollar twenty-nine a gallon.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Gibbon. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item we have is plant mix top asphalt. We had two bidders, we have three items under each one, so G-type one or two. We had Knife River with seventy dollars a ton, and Merlin Roy's at eighty-two dollars a ton, my recommendation is to go with Knife River.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion on a second. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Okay, and the next item we have, and I'm gonna combine these two, because we only had one bidder on these items, we had hot mixes, Class G fines, and the cold mix UPM, we only had one bidder for each of those, and that was Knife River. The Class G fines was a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, and the cold mix UPM was a hundred and eighty dollars a ton, so my recommendation is to award both of them to Knife River.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Got a motion and a second, the second was from Commissioner Erns. You call the roll, Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item I have is riprap. So, we only had one bidder for these items, so my, my recommendations to award, so I have, they, they bid two different locations for pickup of the material. One location is Hay Warden, the other location is Dell Rapids. So my recommendation is going to be award all of them, so I'll go through the prices on them. So for Hay Warden Pickup, Class A, B, and C is thirty-seven twenty-five a ton for all three of them. And then, for Class A, B, and C riprap, Dell, this is LG Everest, at Dell Rapids is twenty-seven forty-five a ton for A, B, and C. So my recommendation is to award all of those, give us options of where to pick it up.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next item I have is Rock Salt on transportation, we had three bidders. Johnson Feed was at ninety-two dollars a ton delivered, Blackstrap Incorporated was eighty-five thirty per ton, and then Central Salt was ninety-one oh-six. Low bid was Blackstrap at eighty-five thirty, so that's my recommendation to go with them.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Gibbon and a second by Commissioner Erns. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right, the last item we have, and I'll have three items under each of these. So we'll have weed, weed control chemical, it's Torodon. We have two bidders, is Nutrien Solutions and Van Deest Supply. Nutrien Solutions was fifty-one forty-eight per gallon, and Van Deest is fifty-one seventy per gallon. So the recommendation on that is to go with Nutrien Solutions for that item.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I've got a motion and a second. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
So the next two items, these are, these prices are sit by manu, set by manufacturer. It's, I had two bidders for each item, it's Frelex, they have thirty dollars a gallon for both Nutrien and Van Deest, and Milestone was the other one, is two hundred and eighty dollars a gallon, and that is for both of them, for Van Deest and Nutrien. So my recommendation is to award to both of those, to both vendors.
All right, thank you, you've heard it. The request, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion by Schmidt, second by Erns. Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
These, we'll have these posted on the website for anybody to view here, maybe later today or tomorrow, so.
All right, thank you.
Terry, do you have a copy for me?
Of the bid tab? Yeah, you want it now?
All right, we'll move on to item seven on our agenda. John, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
So I just have the HVAC maintenance contract that I'd like to have signed with GNR controls.
That's for out at the highway shop?
Correct.
Can I get a motion on that?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. You call the roll, Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, and I just realized something. I did not get public input on all these agenda items.
Did you guys have anything to say?
Oh, you didn't.
Did you guys have anything you wanted to say?
I guess I'm a horrible clerk.
Let's make it right.
Gosh, all right. My apologies. Well, you could've told me.
No, I got told not to do that next time.
Well, now it's opportunity for public comment, right? So if anybody wants to come up and tell me how I failed to do that, please do so now. It is hard to teach old dogs new tricks, I guess.
Well, you're not an old dog, so. Betty Otten, four, six, seven, eight, seven, two, seventy, Third Street, N.T. I just wanted to say thank you for you guys coming up to support HB99 up to peer, and for Commissioner Landy to be on Zoom. I know that it came out of tax, or came out of Senate taxation four to two, and then the very next day it died a very swift death at twenty-eight to seven. However, my husband really appreciated your support for that, and I do have some thank yous for that. But I also want to talk about, just a mention for Terry, when the guys over here were talking about putting down the road stuff to keep the, in front of where they are for the medical, or for the medical marijuana place. We, we pay for our own, if we want that on our road, we pay for it ourselves, we didn't ask the county to do it.
And I'm not clear who paid for that. I know that comment was made, but I don't know, as I sit here, who paid for that.
So he said no, so anyway, but we pay for our own for that. But anyway, thank you for going up to support that very much, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment today? Any Commissioner reports? All right. Council's looking at us like we need an executive session.
We need several.
Okay.
We need one for the purposes of qualifications, competency, and performance with action to follow for a possible exception to the policy on going beyond step five, or a possible reclassification for a position. The other would be for contract negotiations concerning a potential land purchase, and then we also need them for qualificat, for the evaluations for department heads.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session under SDCL 125, two sub one, and three, please? And, and four?
So moved.
Second.
Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Second.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Are we, are we on? We're not, just-
Are we on?
Hold on.
We're on, he's sitting on.
No, he was trying to get Jim on the phone.
Oh.
Did you get Gibbon on the phone? Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll offer that motion again.
Thank you, thank you, Sherry.
Commissioner Erin?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes. You're asking for a motion?
Yes, I'm asking for a motion to reclassify the state's attorney's position from a digital assistant to an investigator at this point in time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Sherry, you call the roll. Oh, public comment. I want that on this agenda, 'cause I can't remember this. Is there a public comment on this agenda item? All right, Sherry, you call the roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Fisher Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.